Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to the December ninth Board of Education meeting for Evanston Township High School. Can I have a roll call, please?
Here.
Yep, here.
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 Here, thank you. So the first item on our agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, good. All right, the next item is comments from the public. Do we have comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this evening.
All right. Okay, so we are at item number six already, and the first item is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report from fiscal year 2023.
Yes, and this is the ACFA, which we're referred to, and I thought Kendra would do it from her seat, but she's gonna go to the podium and talk about the deal war. CFO Williams.
All right, well, good evening, board. I am super proud to present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting received from GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. So this is an award that was started some time ago, almost eighty years ago, by GFOA to really encourage local governments, state governments, and organizations to go above and beyond when it comes to their financial reporting, to make sure that they are promoting transparency and full disclosure. And so, you know, of course, with District 202 and our board goals, we have number three of fiscal accountability, where we prioritize equity, integrity, and transparency. And so this really aligns with our district goals and everything that, you know, we say that we're about. And so I'm happy to announce that we were able to receive this award based on our submission of our annual comprehensive financial report that we submitted. And this is our sixteenth year in a row that we've received it.
Sixteen years.
Sixteen years. That's amazing.
Yes, yes, it is, and it's no small feat. So, you know, I can't say enough how proud I am to be presenting it. But of course, I'm just one person standing before you, and it's not all me. So, you know, a huge shout out goes out to the business office, who helps put all the pieces together, but also to you, board, for your oversight and guidance through everything that we do, and also to all in our community that also help us to balance the budget through the use of property taxes. And then, of course, everyone here at ETHS that helps us to remain fiscally accountable, right? Because it's everything that we do every day. So, thank you to all, and yay us.
Thank you, thank you for that presentation. I feel like I should give you a pin. It doesn't go with it, it doesn't go with her dress, someone just said. Well, that'll be nice, nice picture. Thank you. And, and also make sure that your, your group, your office, your, your staff understand how much we appreciate all the hard work you do. So, thank you, all right. It's a good way to start. Okay, the next item is the Report on Student Wellbeing.
All right, so Madam President and the board, we have Dr. Mia LaVizo, our Associate Principal for Student Services, and her team, Manira Bolis, Dr. Dondelaia White, and Sarah Long, who will come and share the annual report on student wellbeing.
Good evening.
Dr. Campbell was serious. Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, we have a lot of people watching.
Really?
No pressure.
I'm not nervous. No pressure. Well, thank you guys so much for having us here, and I couldn't be here alone because this team has been a godsend. So I'm very thankful, and I'm so happy to be sitting here with them. And Dr. Campbell did introduce them, and I would like for us, if it's okay, can we introduce ourselves, because again, I just think it's really important. And I'm Dr. LaVizo, I am the Associate Principal, and we have next,
Dr. White, Director of Student Support Services.
Sarah Long, Director of Student Services. Hi, good to see you all. Manira Bolis, the Department Chair of Student Services. Last year I was in the role of Student Services Intervention Coordinator. My pronouns are she/her, nice to see you all.
Nice.
Thank you. So we, this is just a, a, a good overview. There is so much work that's done in Student Services that a report is very difficult to, to just summarize everything that's done. So I want you guys, I'm hap, we're happy, we're looking forward to the questions, and hope that you will enjoy this report as much as we enjoy the work we're doing to bring this to you. So we're just starting off with our overview. You're gonna see the board goals and crosswalk, our spotlight, and then we'll go through it with just things that we're doing for equitable and excellent education. And then we go into wellbeing and how I framed it was looking at mental health, things that we situate underneath mental health, our student support teams, academic intervention, alt-school, 504 plans, PHP, looking at counseling and post-high school planning. Then we have a little section that's looking forward, looking at opportunities and challenges, and our conclusion. So just looking through our crosswalk, it's just important that we try to work within our equitable education and same as last year, we're looking to continuously be culturally responsive in everything that we do with our work with students, with staff, and again, with being collegial with one another, giving access and opportunity to students, providing language access services, translation, interpretation. There is a lot of different things that we do, and we're still building this goal and making sure that we're meeting objectives and, and following the mission of the board. Our wellbeing, again, we have our pre- and post-hospitalization, our suicide prevention awareness, our Tier Two interventions, sorry, our IEP intervention groups. And then again, with mental health, we have professional development opportunities for our staff, and again, centered always on student wellbeing. And we have our academic intervention team that again goes and contributes highly to our work with wellbeing. The fiscal responsibility, just making sure that we continue to get the achievements that we have by being fiscally responsible, looking at how we're spending, looking at making sure that we're not just seeing it as being frivolous and just being very intentional and budget-conscious with the department. Our goal four with community engagement, we built a lot with working with YOU. They support a lot of the work that we do with students, and they partner with us, come into some of our department meetings and spoken with us about services and things, offerings that they have. The Oakton Early College and Alyssa's Mission, they do a great job with us with our suicide, our SOS programming. Our Peer Services works with us with substance abuse education, and they do a lot with our PE classes. And JCFAS is something that we're doing with our sexual assault awareness. Something I thought was really important, and I'm not gonna read all of this because it's too much, but to highlight or spotlight was last year, we really were intentional with our HBCU planning. Annually, for many years, Elena Amaker, one of our counselors, has done a fantastic job planning our HBCU panel in the Evening Times. While she and I were collaborating and brainstorming and saying, how do we bring this to the school? How do we bring more atten, attention and intentionality to highlighting what's important for students, Black students in particular, with regard to historically Black colleges and universities? So when we did that, we had an entire day dedicated to HBCU planning. We had our internal, we had external speakers come, and we just made it such an amazing. It, it is something I can't, I was so proud of the work that we did. And as a result of that, and I thought it was so important to highlight, we had a fourteen percent increase, and I believe it is a one-to-one relationship with what we did. It was direct impact. We had a fourteen percent increase of college applications for HBCUs. And I think that's something very significant for our students to understand culturally who they are, how they see themselves, and what opportunities lie ahead for them. It is not to undermine any opportunities that they have for PWIs, but it's also very important to note, how do you see yourself and where do you see yourself? And you'll see more about that next year's report, but we had another amazing event this year and a night panel that was very well attended, and our counselors have been very instrumental in supporting that as well. So again, just talking about equitable and excellent education, these are just opportunities that we have to show where we're being intentional with that work. Our translation services, freshman advisory and sophomore advisory study halls, and the information that's being shared there and being intentional with our students, ensuring that post-high school planning is happening in those classes, SEL workshops. Our Ally Hart and her team have been phenomenal with their planning and implementation of this work, and I, we definitely want to credit them for that work that they're doing. Again, the culturally responsive practices related to post-high school planning and our course planning request, course request planning, excuse me. So when we talk about student wellbeing, we know everybody's first and foremost concern is mental health. So we talk about our social workers. One of our school's social workers, Frizana Shabda, was really passionate in an email she sent me, and I said, I'm gonna make sure that I pay attention to this. We can't do this work alone, we have interns, how many do we have? Gosh, I wanna say.
Hello, we have a combination of first and second year social work interns that support our school as well as school psychologist interns that support as well. So there are about ten second year and about five first year.
In addition, we have two counseling interns as well.
But the work that they're doing to ensure that our Tier Two groups are running and ensuring that they support the social workers and the very difficult work that they do every day with the students who are coming in and out. We have IEP groups and things of that, but those social work interns are getting invaluable training, and we're really proud to be able to send them into the world to be practitioners under our leadership and the work that we've done and how great our social workers are. So they pri, they provide mental health primary, they're the, excuse me, they are our primary mental health professionals. They provide mental health counseling, social, emotional, and wellbeing support, group facilitation, crisis support, and interventions. We have our school psychologists and our interns as well. They do a lot of the testing, but they also run groups. They're also doing SEL work, they're also doing crisis counseling. They, they're heavily involved in our risk assessments, their work is invaluable as well. They provide expertise in behavioral support, academic testing, group facilitation, and they assist families in navigating special education processes and laws. Then we have our school counselors and interns, and again, it's very difficult to just compartmentalize what this group does because it's, it continues to grow. It just seems like every time we have a need, we bring it to Sarah. And then we talk about ways that we can incorporate counselors into expanding our vision for Student Services to ensure that our students are getting their needs met as best as we can. And so they provide in addition to all the other things, but they do the post-high school planning, monitor and support academic progress, provide social, emotional support, course planning, and guidance. So last year, we looked at data the year prior and said, what are, what are our needs? What are we seeing overwhelmingly? And we partnered and collaborated together, Sarah and I, with social work leads, psych leads, and we developed Tier Two groups. And then you'll see this here, these are just some of the overarching needs that we saw as things that we wanted to offer students. And that's our Greek group, we continue to offer that annually. LGBTQ plus support group, transfer student group is something that is, we're trying to build out more so that our students who are transferring in that are not from the community, non-District 65, we want to make sure that when they come into the building, they feel supported, they feel embraced, and there's a building, a sense of community around them. Again, our executive functioning group continues to grow. And social skills intervention, cognitive replacement intervention group, our student athlete coping skills group was fantastic, it was just amazing. And one of our social, two of our social workers worked with this, and they birthed this idea because Sunny Brewer is an athlete, and she wanted, she was a former PE teacher. So she thought about this, and she put a lot of work into planning this, and she and Jasmine, they did this together, so it was fantastic, I had an opportunity to observe it. Anxiety and coping skills group, something that we see, we continue to need a rise in anxiety and coping skill needs. Catalyst Boys Motivation Group was something that I thought was very unique and valuable. Our post-secondary planning group, a Latinas Unidas group, and we will always continue to do our IEP goals groups. But what we saw with this was the Tier Two's group impact was we were reducing social work referrals. These are our goals and what we hope to continue to see, reduce our risk assessments, improve social and coping skills, and improve academic performance. So just taking a, a, a look at our, sorry, our social, social work referrals, I was trying to, sorry, I want to make sure that I'm giving you exactly. So we can just kind of break it down a little bit. We see a fluctuation with our social work referrals, and I did include referrals up until December first of 2024. But social work referrals have various reasons. There could be things that our teachers referring them, safety staff, many different encounters. That doesn't mean that there's an ongoing issue with the student, but everyone is intentional and looking at how we support our students' needs. When we look at, sorry, our racial demographics, we have a breakdown with that, and we see that our Black and Brown students continue to be represented in those numbers highly, and our white students still have significant needs as well. Then we were looking at our risk assessment, and based on gender, it's fairly static. It's, it's equal in terms of that. Looking at our post-hospitalization and how homebound services, during twenty-three, twenty-four school year, PHP supported one hundred and thirteen unique students with ten students experiencing multiple hospitalizations for a total of one hundred and twenty-three hospitalizations. When we look at the numbers and from school year twenty-two, twenty-three, we are seeing that we have a decreased number this year than we did last year. I think with some of the work that we're doing, I'm hoping that it's more impactful. We do have a PHP social worker who is very involved and engaged and partnering with our grade level teams to, to be instrumental in how we support our students. Looking at our homebound students from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, there were a hundred and sixty-four students who received homebound instruction for various reasons. A hundred and twenty-four were mental health-related, forty-one were administrative requests, and six students received homebound instruction during our summer program. Again, from twenty-two, twenty-three, the number has increased for home, homebound students for again, different reasons, where we had a hundred and seventeen students who received the instruction. Academic intervention, very small group of, we have three staff members who work very well together. They serve various needs, it was initially, they were only targeting students with the Ds and Fs, but we expanded that referral process so that we can try and reach our students a little bit more. They all have so many great skills where they are able to connect with students, and we here have a hundred unique students last year that were referred to AIT, and sixteen percent of those students did have 504 plans. Now, they do partner very closely with our 504 case managers to ensure that we're not duplicating services, if I may. So the data reports a disparate number of referrals across racial lines with Black and Hispanic students overrepresented in the program. And it's just a marginal increase from the ninety-two that we had in school year twenty-two, twenty-three. So AIT does something also because we have Amber Bolden, who is a former counselor, and she's very in, involved in post-high school planning. She doesn't just look at AIT as advocacy and just working with students as if they're just, you know, meeting with them. She looks at having them expand to partner with the counselors and do some post-high school planning, see where students are so that they can meet the need. And so they do a survey. So last year, thirty-six of the percent of the students, you know, they reported being interested in a two-year degree, forty-four percent interested in a four-year degree, fifteen percent interested in career trades, and thirty-one percent reported being involved in at least one ETHS activity. So part of her goal for her program is to ensure that all students are connected because we know that when students are connected to the school, then we have better outcomes with their academics and attendance. And our student service, our student support team numbers. Sorry, it's so small for me, too. We did this by our graduating class, and again, you see that, sorry, I should have brought my glasses. In twenty-twenty-seven, we have seventy-one students, and twenty-twenty-six, we have, first, sorry, graduating classes, we have sixty-two, forty-nine for twenty-twenty-five, and thirty for twenty-twenty-four. We look again at our referrals by gender, and the numbers are fairly balanced. And, sorry. Then looking at our federal race code, again, we continue to see the numbers as we have across all, all of the data that we collect. You have twenty-three percent students who are identified as white, two or more races, five point six percent, and Middle Eastern, point five percent, Hispanic is nearing thirty-two percent, and, sorry, African-American students, sorry, darn it. Thirty-six percent, sorry, I can't see it. Again, two hundred and nineteen unique students were referred to SST. Black and Hispanic referrals are consistently higher than other race and ethnic groups. And then the, again, I said, the gender distribution is equal. Five oh four plans. 504 plans. 608 active 504 plans. It's definitely decreased from our school year 22-23, when we had 651 active 504 plans by the end of 22-23. But we do still have a significant increase in 504 that we see from when we started tracking back in '21, where there were 599. And I am certain when we report this data for '24-25, the numbers have increased significantly. Now, we're just looking at our out-school demographics. We had 82 unique students enrolled in out-school. That was a combination of the day and the evening program. Black and Hispanic students have higher enrollment rates than other races. Four of our students have IEPs and four have 504s. What Dr. White and her team does is a student survey to just ask about their experiences and how did out-school positively or adversely impact them or negatively impact them. And I wanted to highlight some of the sentiments of the students. So one student said, "It allowed me to complete work at my own pace." Another one reported, "It gave me an easy way to complete my high school credits in a fun and low-stress environment, and I had the opportunity to have a great teacher." One said, "It positively impacted me because it allowed me to move at my own pace and to make better connections with teachers. I don't really have anything negative to say about the program." Dr. White reports all of the student responses, but I just wanted to highlight some of the ones to let us know how impactful that program is for our students who struggle to be in a general education setting. And I'm not going to read all this to you guys, but I just want you to know that our college and career team, they work very hard to bring work opportunities and education as well as college access and readiness to our students. And again, we had our college and career, I thought this was pretty important. The results of the survey on how students felt if they were prepared or not for school beyond college, beyond ETHS. And results show that white students feel more prepared for college than other racial groups. Black and Hispanic data represents a decreased level of college readiness. These are all self-reported from the students. And I have it broken down by some, many students say, "Hey, we're still working on it." And that's not a bad thing. I mean, at 17, 18, I don't know how many people had it all together. But I do think that, you know, this data reports a need for us to be more intentional with some of our programming. So I think it's very valuable for us to use. Again, this is just looking forward. You know, we review data, we identify the need for more data-driven strategies, and we'll enhance the tier-two interventions with targeted, evidence-based approaches to better support students. Some of the groups that are running currently this year that you, I just put here for looking forward, these are some of the groups that we came up with based on data from last year and that are currently running. So I won't provide any information really about them. But again, we talk about what we want our tier group, tier-two groups to do for us. And that's reduce social work referrals, risk assessments, and improve social work coping. And then in conclusion, our 22, our 23-24 Student Services Wellbeing Report highlights the district's commitment to fostering a supportive, equitable, and responsible, responsive environment for our students through a wide range of programs addressing academic success, mental health, post-high school planning, and social emotional development for the significant strides in meeting the diverse needs of our student body. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. All right, board, any questions? Anybody? Mira? Pat?
Well, first of all, thank you. This was a great report. I really, I loved reading it just for a lot of reasons. I think clearly the intentionality that you all are putting into this work. And, you know, I've been paying attention certainly since I've been on the board, but even before, to the supports and the work that we're doing for, to support student wellness. And I just, I see such a growth. And not only growth, but the layering and the depth of the planning and the programming to support kids on multiple levels with multiple opportunities. And really, one of the things that really came across is that you're seeing kids not in boxes, but in the, all the complexity that all of us bring, right? Each of us are pretty complex, and kids are the same. So I was just really, really impressed by that. And also the use of data, the way that you've really learned from what you've done and applied it to move forward, be it new programming or improvements of programs or expansion of programs, whatever. So just really, this was a wonderful report. And I really appreciate all the work, not only to the report, but all the work you did to support our students. And so this is my question I ask every year, and Taya's already sitting there saying, "I could say this for you," because she's heard it for years. But what, you know, we're the board, we pass the budget, that's a big part of what we do. But what is it, what more would you want or need to do all this wonderful work and more?
You're off the hook.
Actually, I really appreciate that question. And the first two years that I was asked that question, I had trepidation responding. I don't today.
Good.
Because I understand our need and I understand what it takes to get there. I think that it isn't what necessarily student services needs. I think it's what the district needs. And we really, I'm not going to look at Kendra. We really, truly need an MTSS coordinator. It's one who is highly qualified, who understands the complexities of MTSS work and how it impacts interventions and it works across the district. It isn't a student services need, it's a school need. And Manera has been fantastic in working in that capacity in addition to the student support team facilitator and department chair. It's a lot. And I would really like to see her work in collaboration with someone, but really focus in on some of the more in-depth needs that we need for our interventions, for our social workers. She supervises our psychs and social workers and does a fantastic job. But I would love to see her focus more on that and building out some of those interventions and having an MTSS coordinator identify building-wide needs. And it kind of be taken over in that capacity, if I may be very honest, that is.
No, I appreciate your honesty, thank you.
Would be great.
Thanks very much for your terrific report and your great work.
That's great. An MTSS coordinator would change the structure of how things are done, how students get to you. Because my question, I know that Mira has the question, was how, how do you get students for the groups? You know, how, how do they hear about the groups? How do they come to the groups? I was reading about some of these groups. It was, there's some great groups. But then I wonder, would students know they need this group?
Can I ask you, what is, what's the MTS whatever, SS coordinator?
Multi-tiered systems of support.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Multi-tiered systems of support coordinator.
It's the overall person that would organize all of the support that students get.
And interventions, classroom interventions, you know, preventions, monitor the data, monitor the interventions, all of that.
So would you like me to answer directly in regards, in regards to the question of how students then are referred to our tier-two groups? So we have our, I'm going to answer kind of in two parts in regards to what we did last year and then what we've sort of learned from that and some changes that we've already begun to implement in regards to this year. So last year, the majority of our students were referred to a tier-two group through our SST. So part of our student support team problem-solving meetings, they occur every week, every Tuesday. We have our grade level teams that are divided into sort of Team A, Team B, across each different grade level. And then on Thursdays, we hold our SST3 meeting. So that's if we have a parent guardian meeting that comes in for a student that he needs a higher level of support. So if a need is identified either through the grade level team, a teacher, staff member can also refer a student to SST, kind of going through the counselor. Those students are then brought up for us to problem-solve within our team meetings. Problem-solving can involve looking at our whole bandwidth of tiered intervention support. So it's not just our tier-two groups. It can be that we've determined, you know, based off of the student's attendance, the needs of the student. Maybe we're going to refer them to a student advocate, right? Maybe we're going to refer them to the literacy lab or the math lab for this year. So the various interventions that we have. So as we're discussing the student within SST, if we've identified that there's a social emotional need that then fits that criteria for the referral, then similar to how we refer to AIT, we'll submit that referral. And then the facilitator will have the opportunity to do the intake and determine if the student best fits for that group. For our tier-two groups specifically, then once the facilitator, you know, meets with the student and determines if the student is an appropriate fit, then they'd also reach out to the parent to kind of let them know. For some of the groups, that, that makes the most sense, right? Because there is a specific criteria that kind of needs to be met in order to determine that it's the right intervention. It's not necessarily an opt-in support for a student. And so it doesn't necessarily make sense for a student to say, "Hey, I want to be in the, let's say, the executive functioning group." I think that would be a great fit. There's a lot of executive functioning, we know is a weakness for anybody under the age of 26, right? But that doesn't necessarily mean that our executive functioning group is the correct support for that student. We have our freshman advisory, we have Avid, we have a number of different tier-one supports that would most likely be the best fit for them. So that's when the grade level team is able to really make sure that that's the best support appropriate for that student. This year, what we've sort of identified is there are some specific groups, the executive functioning one being one of them, where we've explored getting more teacher feedback actually for referrals for that group. Previously, again, it just, it kind of came from, if a teacher reached out as we're talking about a student, then that would be a referral. Whereas this year, after we received our quarter-one data, we then identified, hey, how can we more explicitly outline what this group is so that teachers are aware? And after they receive that quarter-one feedback, if they've noticed, okay, this student is exhibiting various characteristics, you know, towards the end of this quarter, they pushed and got everything in at the very last minute. Their grades were fluctuating throughout the entire semester. The work completion was like 70%. Those are sort of tangible, those are data points that are hard for us from a grade level team to see that, right? That's not really written anywhere. And so we've elicited that through teachers after quarter-one to then get more referrals to that tier-two group.
Thank you, thank you. It's really understanding the groups and the teachers who know the students better. Yes, and the team.
We also made a change this year as well. So we kind of created a PowerPoint slide that we have this year that explicitly outlines each of the tier-two group, mental health groups that we have as well. And then those were shared at, with the department chair, department chairs, and then share out with their teachers too.
Excellent, great, great, thank you, thank you. Sorry, Mira.
No, it's okay, Monique, did you want to follow up with that?
I just wanted to understand it.
Okay.
You know, what you, your lingo, that's all.
And it's so good to know that our follow-up student behavior will be also thinking about that, especially at tier-one space of the classroom and management. So I'm going to make an assumption, which is, right, not probably a good idea. But just to also make a point, and also I really second what Pat just said about your work and you're brilliant, like the write-up and the analysis. So I don't mean to jump over that, I just want you to know that, I appreciate your work. I am thinking about how, unless I missed it, but I didn't see a disaggregation of racial identity for suicide, hospitalization, or 504s. Did I, was it in there?
Actually, it, we have it, I didn't put it in there. But the suicide risk assessment, we don't have racial identification. We're working on actually getting that because that has been something that has been brought to our attention normally. And we would have to just get a specialized report run based on the student's ID. But when we do a risk, a suicide risk assessment, there is no place in there to set, you know, for racial identifier. But, but there is a way to collect that data. So we are definitely looking at the importance of that and being able to identify significant needs for students in that regard.
Okay, thank you. And I think about, sometimes we don't get to address, and this is where my assumption is coming in, the impact of racism, of white supremacy on white kids. And I think if I'm using my assumption, and I hate to do that, but there's probably a majority of white students in these populations of 504, suicide, and hospitalization. And so that's just a place that I think it would be good for us to understand the impact of white supremacy on white kids. But again, I'm making an assumption.
You're not really making an assumption, it's factual. But instead of that, it'd be good for you to have that information. So we'll make sure that that is something that we're reporting out next time.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say, to start out, that I think that this report and everything you shared is a testament to how much student services does and how much it, you juggle, that you all juggle and how there's never enough time in any day to do what you want to do. So kudos. I had a question about, so I'm looking at the written report that we got in our packet, which is a little different than the slide presentation. And so I had a comment and a question. The comment I had was, there was an opportunities for growth and change. There was reference to, I guess, introducing a summer enrichment program tailored to help struggling students who are credit deficient earn credits to get back on track to meet graduation requirements. And I just wanted to say that I'm really glad to see that. I know from experience how it can be for students to feel like they've dug themselves into a hole. And then they start a new school year, and they just feel like they're getting more and more behind, and then they disengage. So I just really wanted to note that that was in the report. And then the question I had was, there was also reference to a new MTSS platform that will streamline the process in allowing staff to track progress, identify trends, and adjust strategies in real time. And I just wondered if you could just say a bit more about that.
Let me just say something, so, thank you, Leah. And that, it was so that we could talk, that I was kind of setting the stage for next year's report. Because all of those wonderful things are currently happening right now. So that's Panorama, we, we've, and I don't want to take Manera's shine because she's so amazing. She did like the work.
You may have to define like what that is and blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Or Manera does, whatever.
Well, let me, before we do that, I want to say that we had a position that was in our department for at-risk students and things. And we, Dr. White, I, we worked and collaborated and partnered and said, "How do we repurpose this to make this meaningful and change impact?" And Dr. White, again, I am somebody who have great ideas, but I am all about sharing and giving their credit when it's due. She proposed the summer enrichment program. So we did that this past summer for out-school. And we had our own summer program within summer school. And we utilized our new teacher to expand out-school as well. So we are really reaching more students, again, who, when you see the results of out-school and those students who say, "I'm doing much better than I would have been in the traditional setting," for whatever reasons, we, you know, they have various reasons. But if, we've expanded it also to include credit deficient, what is it, second semester freshmen? Yes, second semester freshmen. However, we, they're not going to stay and graduate from out-school. We want to get them up to speed and then reintegrate them back into the ETHS system because we want to. because we want them to still have the full access and benefits of what the school offers, the gen ed program offers. But for our older students, we certainly want to do whatever we can to ensure their ultimate goal is graduation. And we want to make sure that we help them realize that goal. So that's why that is there.
Thank you.
Panorama. So Panorama came out of a need that was identified, I mean, last year, I should say, we moved on identifying the need, but I think that it was a consistent need that the district has had for, since I've been here. And it was, the process was led by Dr. Kenzie last year in regards to us exploring various software, educational software, that could help us document the various interventions that we're doing within the school building. Because as you know, with 3,600 students and, you know, what, over 700 staff, it's difficult to make sure that everybody knows how we are supporting Johnny. How, like, what support has been done for Johnny throughout this entire school year, but throughout his entire time here at ETHS. And so Panorama is a software that allows for us to track the interventions that the student is being supported within the building. It also outlines the various sort of day-to-day support that a student receives. So, you know, Johnny came down to talk about, he needs a bus pass, we can document that. So it's not necessarily an intervention, right? But it is a support that's being provided. So it allows for us to track that. And it also is a more, I would say, graphically comprehensive and easier way to digest various data in regards to academic behaviors and attendance for a student. And so it will allow, while, you know, there's various ways to see that within an e-school, it's not really as a comprehensive view. You have to go through, you know, 15 different screens to kind of get a full picture of a student. And so Panorama allows for us to have that overarching holistic view of a student. It's in a number of different districts. It primarily started off as a survey functionality, so social emotional well-being surveys, and they've expanded now into their intervention tracking platform. But it's been a great way for us to ensure that all team members throughout the building eventually are aware of how we're supporting our students. So yeah, so that's Panorama. And this has been the first year that we've began to sort of implement it. And I will leave it at that unless there's additional questions. Because there's a lot.
Who has access to it?
As of right now. So in the spring, we purchased the software. And then over the summer, we did some initial work to kick us off the school year. So this year, we began with, primarily within Student Services in relation to like, the count, it's grown. As people have begun to see what it is, they want to get in on it because it's good. It's a great way to see the support. But it began primarily with like our counselors or social workers or psychs at the very beginning. And then we've expanded now to most of the interventionists within the building. So AIT, restorative practices, truancy, our literacy lab, our math literacy lab. If there's an intervention in the building, we've pretty much expanded now to onboarding and then integration as well. Next week, we have a meeting to kind of initially review sort of semester one. But yeah, at this point, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have one tiny little extra question. Can I ask? This is in the college and career services part. I just wondered if this was like true or maybe a typo or whatever. I noticed that when they were referring to supports, like just beyond the programming that the counselor lessons and the college career services specifically do, they said how the data science class is leveraging school links. And then it says AP English, introducing the application essay. And I wondered, is it only AP English? Because why, why would it only be AP English and not all English classes?
I, they are doing the college application process throughout all their classes. They'll work on college essays throughout all the English classes. But I think that that was a particularly targeted class that Beth's team, Beth Ari and her amazing team worked with in collaboration with the teachers.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Gretchen.
I don't want to take up too much more time, but I just wanted to touch on something that's a recurring theme for me when everybody does a report in front of the board. And that is the use of raw numbers versus percentages of our student body. And this report has a couple of occasions where we're referring to a trend in, for example, the number of social work referrals. And then a little bit later, there's also a bar chart on suicide risk assessment counts. And we talk about trends. I don't think we can talk about trends based on the data that's presented here because it's just raw numbers. So, for example, you know, there's a line drawn across the bar graph. And I, I know that our student body numbers are not static over the course of, you know, from '21 to currently. And this is a pretty small, I think it would be hard to say there's a trend even if we did have the numbers as a percentage of our student body. But, and I've done this before. I've taken reports when I'm at home preparing for a board meeting where I, you have to go dig into our school report card and come up with our total student body. And then I have to go back to the report and I have to like do math and figure out what the percentage of the student body referred to is again. But I just really wish, this isn't just you, it's been many groups that come to present before our board. But I will note that the discipline report coming up has mastered it.
Yes.
So if you want a model, you can look at that discipline report for how they utilize the, the actual percentage of our student body. It just makes it, and I'm going on about this because it's been many years that I've talked about it. And I know that not all of you have been here for many years, but I'm in my final months on the school board. So I'm going to go after it now. And I just, I would love to see it because I do think these trends, if they are trends, are huge to know. You know, how many students are getting referred and how many students have gone through a suicide risk. I mean, that's hugely important. But the raw numbers are not showing us a trend at all. They're just, just a point in time, which is interesting, good to know, or not good to know, you know, we'd like to see fewer. So it's still, it's not that it's irrelevant. But I, I'm just trying to give a little context for, for why it matters. And I, I hope that we can keep bringing, I, I think your report is, is super interesting and super important because of all this stuff that we've already talked about. So I don't mean to take away from any of that. So many interesting ways to support our students, in a way, just almost too many and so complicated that as a parent with a kid with unknown problems, with somebody who's struggling, I would still have a hard time trying to figure it all out. So, you know, and you've, you've made clear that you care deeply. And so the parents, I think, are going to have to trust in that deep care to navigate this, which is, you know, still terribly complicated. But for the board, I think it'd be great if we had more of that, less raw numbers, more percentage of student body stuff. Thank you.
Liz.
I have a comment and a question. Just looking at your tier two intervention groups, I just wanted to commend you all for the sheer number of them. The breadth and depth of the groups just amazed me. I was so glad to see everything that was there. So that's my comment. I have a question about homebound instruction, and I'm not an expert on this at all. I'm just thinking back to pandemic days when everybody was at home. But I'm curious, and I know there's a lot of reasons why people might be homebound. But I'm curious, do many of the students, are they able to like zoom into class and have live class instruction? Or is that a goal? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Homebound is typically provided for students with a medical need. It can be a physical medical need or a mental health medical need. And they provide documentation from a physician or therapist that notes the need for the homebound. And it's not provided by the actual teachers of the students. It is provided by, we have a homebound facilitator. He's a contract guy. We've had him for years. I inherited him. So he's been here 20-plus years. And then we have other teachers who sign up to provide homebound support as well, from special ed teachers to foreign language teachers. And the support is either provided in person or virtually. So the great thing about the pandemic is that it taught us that we could provide some of these services without being in person. Because in person, someone 18 years older has to be in the house. So then there, there are a lot of other stipulations for providing that service in person. But the coordinator or the person that's providing the homebound instruction collaborates with the student teachers and gets all of the work and the information. And teachers give that person access to their Google Classroom. And then that teacher goes and supports the student with completing those assignments and that work.
And then is the, the length or the duration of the homebound instruction, like typically a shorter-term thing or a longer-term thing that could go over four years or?
It depends. So we have students who have sick of sale. And so their physician completes their homebound for the entire year. But for a student like that, it is based on when the need happens. So say they have a flare-up or they have a hospitalization, they may only need homebound to get them caught up in some tutoring. And it may be for like five days. That doesn't mean that they're not back physically in school. It just means there was a lapse in their education and so they need some support getting caught up. So each situation is different. We provide homebound support also from an administrative aspect for students who are suspended 10, 10 days for, for school. And so it just depends. It varies. Typically for mental health, it's for six to eight weeks because usually those students are in PHP programs, IOP programs, and so different types of programs.
Thank you for your insight.
You're welcome.
Okay. Other questions?
Just add a comment. I don't have a question. Whenever I get this report, I'm reminded just how diverse and dynamic not only our community is, but the school is. And, you know, how hard you're trying to meet the goals of the board. And so I want to commend you on doing that work. This is not a heavy lift. You know, I mean, this is a heavy lift. I'm tired. This is not a light lift. This is a heavy lift. Not only to, to, you know, keep our students and our families in mind, but working with the teachers, working with everyone in the school and the community to bring in the correct partners to provide the supports, to help our students and to help our families. So I think, knowing what I know, I think I support the MTSS. I think that's what it's called. Is that it?
You do.
So I, I support that. I don't, I don't know, you know, anything that helps coordination to me is, you know, it's like, yeah, how can we make it better? Because you're doing all this work and it should not be for not, right? And I know it's not. But this is a lot. This is, this is a lot in my operations mind. I'm looking and I'm listening and I'm reading all this and I'm just like, I don't know how you hold all this together and then catch things that are falling. So I, I just want to commend all of you for doing this work that many can't do. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Because we really do work hard. And I am going to take the opportunity to say, it is not an individual job. We do this collectively together. Every person here has such a great expertise and I lean in on them all the time. So thank you for acknowledging that. I appreciate it. It's important to know.
Absolutely. It's clear. I think that's the sentiment of the whole board. So Monique, thank you for putting that in words for us. But we can see in reviewing this report, how hard you work and how many students you touch and how much you learn from students and aware of the needs of the students to drive your work. And even looking ahead in the future at a possibility of having an MTSS coordinator or whomever would take on that role. That's a big, that's big. Or whatever, maybe it would be one of you. I don't know. But I know that it's big. I know that it's a lot and it's big. There are other districts doing, doing it. So lots of models out there for you to capitalize on. So thank you. Thank you again. Thank you for the report and the discussion.
Thank you all.
Certainly. Great. All right. Uh-oh. Get in trouble. All right. So our next item is the student discipline report.
All right. Thank you. We have Dr. Keith Robinson, associate principal for Educational Services, Dean Tish Hinko, Dean, excuse me, Latisha Hinko, Dean Pedro Soriano, Dean Tamile Moore. And we've got our restorative practices coordinator, Anthony King, in the back to chime in to talk a little bit about that. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Robbins.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You know, you took my bullet point number three, Gretchen. I was going to thank you for your guidance and reporting. And I know this is your last discipline report in this seat, so we hope that it's acceptable.
I've got so much to say.
First of all, I want to take this time to just appreciate you for your work and your support with this team. Bullet point number three here says, remember that this is a snapshot from the 23-24 school year. And that one of the things that I think is super important is the fact that we have the, the new data dashboards, which can give a recent snapshot of what's going on. Let's go right in. I want to introduce my team. With us tonight is Dean Soriano, Hinko, and Moore. Dean Boyd is not here on today, but we certainly cannot do this work without the support from Angie Harding, our assistant in the dean's office, Kevin Augusta, Michael Williams. And again, thank you for introducing Mr. King, who has somehow stayed connected to this department, which is dear and near to him. Just to remind the community, the board, really the point of the discipline philosophy of the dean's office, we really are committed to creating a safe learning environment. And, and we prioritize prevention, guide social work, emotional learning, and the use of interventions to empower students with critical thinking skills that's not just for high school, but these are lifelong skills. So today, we'll talk a little bit about the district goals. Dean Moore will talk a little bit about the disciplinary incidents. Mr. Soriano will talk about the types of disciplinary incidents. Dean Hinko will talk about the actual suspension data. We'll kind of come back looking at trends and some of the things that we're excited about moving ahead. So here are the district goals. Again, pretty consistent from last year. One of the things that we just want to highlight is the efforts with our community engagement and partnerships. It has been just so amazing to continue with the support from our research partnership. And I cannot tell you how critically important it's been to have the team, the youth division team with the city of Evanston. They really helps us and we help them. It's really great, you know? Sometimes there are situations that may spill into the building and they help us out with trying to get ahead of some things and really provide preventative support. And sometimes we're able to do the same thing if we note or hear about something that could kind of spill into the community. So having that relationship has been really critically essential to the work that we're doing. So having that relationship has been really critically essential to the work that we're doing. We're really gonna focus in on goal number two, student well-being, where it's a hundred percent of students do not receive a behavioral referral. And although that is quite the aspiration, Mr. Moore is gonna tell us the real numbers.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, here at Evanston Township High School, we practice the three Rs: respect for yourself, respect to others, and respect for the community. And in practicing the three Rs, seventy percent of our students went through the entire school year without receiving a conduct referral or having any incidents. We did have, however, seven hundred and fifty-one students who created incidents, which resulted in a total of two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine referrals for the entire school year. Of those seven hundred and fifty-one unique students, we had six hundred and thirteen students who received between one and five incidents. However, we had, as you look at, at the bottom, we had forty-two students who required a great deal of support. Twenty of those students had between sixteen to twenty incidents throughout the school year. And twenty-two students alone generated more than twenty-one incidents apiece. Those forty-two students combined were, make up one point three percent of the overall student population. But those forty-two students required a great deal of support and we spent quite a, a great deal of time trying to find ways to help support them to be successful here in school. When we look at students involved in disciplinary incidents by race, code, and gender, of the seven hundred and fifty-one unique students, three hundred and thirty-four students were African-American, two hundred and ten students were Hispanic, and a hundred and fifty-four students were white. When we look at the students involved in disciplinary incidents by the graduation year, we look at seven hundred and fifty-one unique students, fifty-eight percent of the incidents were created by freshmen and sophomore students. And that was for a total of four hundred and forty incidents total. So again, seven hundred and fifty-one unique students, but fifty-eight percent of those were our underclassmen, our freshman and sophomore students. And that trend pretty much is continuing on.
Good evening. So I'm looking at the two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine disciplinary incidents done by the seven hundred and fifty-one unique students. And how does that compare to last year? Well, it is a rise of thirteen percent. Last year we only had twenty-five, eighty-five. There's, there's various reasons why this may be possible. And as we go look through the data, we can kind of break down a little bit by little, little by little where specifically this lies. And at the end, if you have questions, we can try to address those. As you see at the top, I, I think I mentioned this actually at the last board member, at the last board meeting last year, that we were gonna be breaking down the unauthorized presence section because we felt like it was an area that required a deeper, kind of a deeper look. And here, as you can see, the differences, as we broke it down, still, there's a lot of things that are being categorized simply as unauthorized presence, which could mean kind of roaming the hallways, not being in, in class without a pass. But I think we did specifically look at some of the other areas specifically saying, you know, they were in unauthorized areas and spaces that they were not supposed to be in, unsupervised. Perhaps, you know, the, they weren't given a pass to be in a certain area, so that's probably that. As far as exiting the building without permission, exiting class without permission, those are more specific. And our staff was able to really, you know, narrow down on those specific reasons. Still, as you see, that's our main referrals that we receive in the dean's office. And then the next one is disrupting the school environment and not following teacher or staff directions. This one is gonna be kind of broken down a little further, specifically with some of the referrals that we are really looking at regarding our phone, cellphone policy and not following that. So the three new ones that we will have for the next year's report will specifically say if a student was cellphone, either talking or texting, cellphone in, what was it, not in storage. And the third was using cellphone or, you know, not placing it away or putting it away. So we will look at that more specifically. But as, as these situations indicate, there's something we can work on addressing more specifically of where students are supposed to be and what we can do to try to get them more focused on instructional, more on instruction as opposed to being distracted. As we look at the referrals, as mentioned by Dean Moore, the grad year you'll see more at the, at the first freshman and sophomore grade level. It's, it's that transition that they're making to the high school and specifically, they don't have deans over there. So now there's someone to address those issues that, you know, they may have had in the past. But this way, they, by the time they get to juniors and seniors, as you can see, it really goes down. As far as, this is something we've looked at for many years and, and of course, this is very concerning. But this is just the, the breakdown of what we see. I mean, we're not going to, I mean, we, we cannot change these things overnight, but we are, have been working on addressing these year after year. So as you can tell, our black and brown students are the ones that are mostly involved in the incidences here at ETHS. And no surprise, we've talked about this over the years, the male students are more active and more often visitors to our offices. And then the bottom shows the discrepancies from students with free and reduced lunch as opposed to non-low income students. And those with IEPs are about almost eleven hundred and without IEPs are eighteen forty-one. And our EM students, it's a, it's a growing pop, more of a growing population. But those that are here are involved in almost five hundred of the incidences in our offices.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to report on the suspension data. And so during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, two hundred and fifty students resulted in five hundred and three suspensions. Now, I'm going to kind of break down the different types of suspensions. We have inside suspension and out of school suspension. And if we take a look at the data, there were three hundred and eight incidents that resulted in inside suspension and a hundred and ninety-five that resulted in outside suspensions. However, it is important to note that we're working hard to make sure that students are in school so that they're able to access or gain access to instruction as well as other support services through the ALC. As we break down the data a little bit more, we're taking a look at the, now the top three infractions that result in students being placed in inside suspension or placed on outside suspension. And at the top, of course, unauthorized presence, which has resulted in a number of inside suspensions for our students. Once again, I will reiterate that we are choosing to place them in inside suspension so that they are able to stay connected in school and receive the supports necessary for them to be able to actually have the, be able to function in a way that they should in the building. And then if we take a look at outside suspension, our number one infraction, of course, is, as we look at it, is fighting at thirty, at thirty-six percent. As we look at suspensions by the grad year, we highlighted the tw, class of twenty-twenty-six, our current juniors, and the class of twenty-twenty-seven, our current sophomores. And these students continue to demonstrate a need for more intensive support. And we have continued to refer students to various supports so that they are able to receive the supports necessary when they show this need. Suspensions by federal race code. And you take a look at the data here, inside suspensions versus outside suspensions. At the top, we see that our black and brown students unfortunately are the majority who are suspended both in and outside of school. Suspension by gender. If we're taking a look at this, out of the number of students who identify as male and or female, our male students are at the top as they are placed at, I'm sorry, placed in, in, in school suspension and outside suspension. Inside suspension at fifty-nine percent and outside suspension at sixty-nine percent. Now, I will break down the suspensions by income status. The low-income students make up seventy-seven percent of the suspensions for both inside and outside suspensions. So suspensions by IEP status. In comparison, students who do not or are without IEPs are shown to have an increased number of inside and outside suspensions. And then suspensions by EM status. It is important to note here that EM status students are at twenty percent, nearly twenty percent for both inside and outside suspensions.
All right, this is great as far as having longitudinal data from twenty-sixteen. And I tell you what's really interesting, is this the, yeah, here we go. I'll go over here. It appears, if we're looking at the different numbers, if you're looking at kind of pre-COVID numbers, it's really interesting that the data this year kind of feels like it should be slotted right there before pre-COVID, which I thought was really interesting, which in one way could seem that it's, you know, we're kind of jumping back to where we were with the trending, the downward trend in the data for most subgroups. This too is a line graph of students who were suspended one or more times throughout the years from two thousand nine, ten to now. And again, there is that decreasing trend there. But again, it's, it's really interesting if we're looking, you know, at the, at that critical piece of when COVID hit us, we're, we're still kind of down. So I'm, I'm trying to think and wonder what that is and if that's a good sign that we're jumping back in. But it's just something, something to note. And this is the percentage. We had the numbers, Gretchen Levinson, and now we have the percentage. Again, which is an interesting downtrend for those students who are suspended one or more times.
When we look at students suspended one or more times by race and ethnicity, of two hundred and thirty-six unique students, a hundred and twenty-five of the students were African-American. Eighty-three, eighty-three of the students were Hispanic and twenty-eight of those students were white. The percentage of students suspended one or more times by race or ethnicity, fifteen percent were African-American, eleven percent were Hispanic, and two percent were white. And the number of days supported instructional time, instructional time lost for the twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, a total of six hundred and fifty-five days of instruction was lost by students. Three hundred and eighty-three days total were served in the ALC or in-school suspension, while a total of two hundred and seventy-two total days were lost because of outside suspension.
So when we look at, how do you save some of those days? Because it, it did drop, I don't know if you can go backwards real quick, from eight ninety-five to six fifty-five. Well, this, this next chart shows us how. In previous years, we had multiple kind of alternatives to suspensions and reduction programs. This year, we've, we've narrowed it down to three. And these have been really used to support our students. Now, the restorative practices has kind of encompassed several separate programs that we used to have. But specifically, I will look into more of the specifics of that program, but that's, that's our program that's led by Mr. King. He does an incredible job with our students. And he's able to immediately, in, in many cases, he's able to, to really get working with the students sooner than later. When incidents occur, it's good to have an individual that is able to really connect with the students and help them to understand the circumstances of their situation. The next one would be Students Understanding Impact, which is done through our, with our SAP coordinator, social worker that specializes in substance abuse and really works with our students. We do have to make referrals to that staff member after, you know, the incidents occur and then they proceed and process through. They, they try to get through them as quickly as possible with their team. But we understand sometimes they get backed up a little. And then Community Service Program, which we're working on with Dr. Robinson, myself, and Erin Clays with the Community Service Department, working to give us other options to work with our, partner with our community members, community programs to reduce some of our suspensions and other incidences. As I mentioned, the restorative practices encompasses several things. So we have the, it says peace circles, but it's, it's many things. I think it's peace circles, restorative conversations, check-ins. These are the specifics that could be asked of, of Mr. King since he is present today on, on what he specifically does with the students. I know we've seen it firsthand in the dean's office and how he's worked to mediate a lot of the issues that, that have come to us. And we do really appreciate that. The next is the Third Millennium, which is online platform that is used to kind of address some of these incidences that occur. Of course, these go through a referral process. We will, typically the process goes, we speak to Mr. King and then we put a referral in and then he tries to get going at it. And he feels, you know, he kind of looks at the situation and which, which one of these, you know, I guess tools from the toolbox can be best utilized for this particular incident, whatever it might be. So you have the online, as I said, the online platform of Third Millennium. We have accountability projects which are assigned to the students by Mr. King. And then the SEP, which is the Student Empowerment Program, where they work in a small group. And they typically discuss better decision-making, peer pressure, those type of, of situations. But there's also a component of a peer jury, like a, a small group peer jury to help the students understand kind of the circumstances or what, what brought them to that particular group on that particular day.
So through our partnership with North Cook's A-Lot Program, in response to the increased number of unauthorized presence in the building, Mr. Bogan and Ms. Beatrice Cabrera have connected with sixty-one of our students by recommendation of their grade level team. Now, through their work with our students, we're hoping to continue to utilize them as they work with our students who struggle with unauthorized presence in the building to combat this in-school truancy so that students are able to attend classes, understand the importance of attending classes, and improve their attendance overall. So what are we going to do with this data, about this data? Well, first Well, first of all, we're going to continue to build relationships throughout this building as well as throughout the community because we know that it takes a village to do the work that we do. And we're also going to continue to work with the student advocates to reiterate, to, you know, combat combat the in-school truancy that we have continued to see throughout our building. Next, we are going to expand the work that we are doing with Mr. King through the restorative practice process. And lastly, we are really going to dig deeper into the data so that we are able to make adjustments throughout the school year and in the future, which would be to figure out what, how how can we be effective in best supporting our students in this building?
With that, I get a chance to do the thank yous to our research team, who are incredible. You know, it's really easy to just pull data and run reports. But doctors Levy and Harder really have, and and they're interested in the work. They're interested in the data and they help us connect dots and run those reports. Dr. Beavis is a great thought partner with how to present the data. So again, much gratitude to Dr. Beavis. Our school resource officers continue partnership with the village, I mean, with the village. Oh, my mother. Wrong town.
Wrong town.
Yeah, the the city. As we continue to partnership and this, again, have the critical work and support from those guys and our safety department, again, boots on the ground, who are extensions of the office to help find, they know where to find them when they're hiding in all the crevices of this this school. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that report and all of those details. We'll start over here with Pat and then we'll work our way around.
Oh, sorry. We're looking at. Well, first of all, thank you for this report and thank you for all this work because I know these numbers are just the tip of the spear iceberg, whatever metaphor you want to use in terms of just how much you're all you all are doing and how many students you're meeting with and and supporting. So it's it's a huge job and and I really appreciate all that you do. Couple of things, I I'm, well, really, I guess I have one main question concern is, so for several years, I raised this issue of unauthorized presence. I didn't understand what it was. It seemed amorphous and very open to, you know, I might think you're, you know, I might write you up, but someone else might not. It was very open. And I really appreciate that you went into the language and and made it more clear. But as we see this year, we have a hundred more suspensions as a result from last year five to this year a hundred and five. And that's just for the general category, not for the other, the breakdown that you did. And I guess, you know, you're, I know you want to work on sort of looking at the data and trying to figure this out. But I I really, I I think this is sort of a, an example of the work that we really need to do and what we, and how, I mean, all of these categories, we need to better understand. And I know you're doing that. You're meeting with students. You're trying to individualize the supports for them and and I do, I think that's fabulous. But it just, it, this is kind of, to me, as I read the report, it really stuck out as, this is an example of a lot of other things, right? So for example, could we share this data with our safety staff so that they see maybe some of their own implicit bias? Are they writing up African-American boys more than white boys or, you know, things like that? I feel like this is just a really important one. And and so I guess it just, you know, it really rang very loudly as I was reading the report. And I guess I have a question in terms of, or I'd like maybe a little more explanation on what that category, you know, the general category, how it's used, when, you know, how does, how does not being in the right place turn into a suspension? And kind of, maybe you could just help a little, I understand it's a lot. There's a lot there. I don't expect you to answer it all. But maybe just help me understand it a little better.
So for these, the eighty, I think I'm looking here at the suspensions, eighty incidences of suspension, in-school suspension for unauthorized presence, I think that could be as as far as steps are concerned. So there's an unauthorized presence and perhaps they were, took a pass and they went to somewhere they shouldn't have. And then when they were involved in either a verbal or a physical altercation, so then they're brought into the dean's office and upon searching belongings for, when we have either a suspicion of of drug use or or something possibly being under the influence and or involved in a physical altercation, we then find other things. So it's kind of a step. So there could have been one incident, there was consequence, and then it led to another situation, then another situation. That's one example. Another example is possibly the fact that this was the fourth time we found them in the hallways. And so the the next step would be, you know, the first time we talked to them, we get them escorted to class. The next time after that, if it's, there's a second time, they would be escorted. We would speak to them. We would have them escorted down to the ALC for that block, to finish off the block. Typically, we'll catch them near the end of that block and then they're brought back in. In those situations, I know we often call home, tell the parents, hey, look, this is what's been going on. We told your student that on the third incident or beyond, we're going to be placing them in the ALC for the remainder of the day. And the parents are very supportive of that, right? They they say, please, you know, I don't want them in the restrooms. I don't want them getting out of the building. I don't want them causing other issues. At least there, they're receiving assignments through the Google Classroom and they're getting supports from the teachers that are in the in the ALC block by block. So I think it's for that, it'll indicate there, but it doesn't say like, I mean, if it, let's say it says we put them in there for two blocks in one day, that will read as inside suspension, right? It's not going to read just one, you know, one half of a day or a portion of the day. It'll usually read the full day.
So the first example, thank you for that. That's helpful. The first example you gave was sort of an acceleration. Does that mean that if a student is identified for unauthorized presence, that's the, so unauthorized presence on the data could include a kid who also got in a fight and had a weapon, let's say?
Possibly.
But but my point is, it's not just they weren't in the right place at the right time.
No.
There's more to it. So you don't, you don't write up the suspension for the fight. You write it up for the first.
You know, earlier in the day, they might have been, you know, looking and seeking out someone. For example, they did not get into a fight. But the example would be they came up to, they left their classroom and then they were standing outside of another classroom trying to entice another person out of that classroom. Or in some of them, in some brazen or kind of, you know, examples, they've actually entered the classroom searching another, for another individual. That occurred. If they do not get into the physical altercation, that that was unauthorized presence, right? They entered another room to, you know, threaten another individual. Could that be harassment, intimidation? Yeah, verbal threat. I mean, those could be, but in in the most immediate is that they went there with an intent on to get at someone. And that might be an example right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just add, I one hundred percent agree with you that it's a symptom of something. Students, for whatever reason, you know, they just find themselves in the hallway. And we had to come up with some type of progressive way of saying, hey, we need you to stop. You know, come on down. Okay, now you're gonna, you know, stay in one place for the remainder of the period. So that definitely, we need to figure out a way to count periods instead of just the number. So that's something that that I can definitely look into. And I did recall just a few incidents where we've had students enter a classroom to either witness a fight or get involved in a fight. And that happened a few times during that school year. Kids like rushing a classroom, many kids rushing a classroom. That's really creating unsafe environment in the classroom for other students and themselves. So unfortunately, again, our freshman and sophomore students, we really need to provide more structure for them. And we're looking at ways to even partner with our student services and some other special programming to really get into those classrooms. You know, we have one platform with the deans in summer school really do a nice job with get into the, what is the, welcome to ETHS classrooms.
Prep to ETHS?
Yeah, and say, hey, listen, these are some of the expectations that we have. But, you know, sometimes, you know, students, you know, don't believe until they believe.
Right.
So we've been very preventative. And even in those particular cases where we had that kind of bus, bum rush to a class or two, it didn't escalate into an actual altercation. So again, I'm really thankful for the safety team and even the quick response to our classroom teachers and staff who, you know, let us know what's going on right away so that we can intervene.
Yeah. Yeah, because I I think that you raised something that I wanted to ask a question about because it feels like this is an example and there are others you could pick, you know, looking at the the kids who are the most suspended, the most incidents recorded in a year, like really drilling into a smaller group and really trying to understand. Certainly, you have to try to understand each individual, but sort of understand what's going on here. What's what's the backstory, both collectively and individually? And this unauthorized presence just jumped out at me as another, maybe one of the ways. That seems like a huge category that there's a lot of pulling apart you could look into and and try to better understand. And I did want to know to what extent, because you have the three programs and I thought that was really interesting what you said, that you've kind of consolidated that these were the most effective and and you're focusing on those. And I thought that was really great. But what about, we just heard this fabulous report. How how much of that is is being utilized by you all or how much are you offered? And how much collaboration is there with that work?
So the deans are part, first of all, great question. The deans are part of the grade-level team that we, that meet, meet weekly with the team, the counselor, dean, social worker. And again, if there's a behavioral attendance concern that's brought to the team. And again, they discuss and they make the referrals for more intervention for the students. So it's pretty targeted and and pretty frequent. And oftentimes, they're not waiting until the weekly meeting if there's some urgent need to engage. So they're they're on the phone with each other quite a bit. There's tons of collaboration between the departments.
And the and the resources as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I don't have to tell you, you developed the report that while it's wonderful that we're seeing a decrease, that, you know, the span between white, Latino, and African-American is is kind of staying pretty much the same. Not completely, but pretty close. And I know that's something that bothers you and you're working on. But I I just feel like, you know, maybe picking something and really drilling down into it and trying to figure one thing out might be instructive to the rest. Because we've just, we've got to figure out a way to do things in, you know, I don't know, shake it up, rename it, not do, I don't know, whatever it is, I think we we just have to, we just have to make some some little and big changes so that we can stop this kind of trend of the data. And and you know that. I'm not telling you anything you don't know.
Yeah, I was going to mention Dean Hinckel, you know, talked about what are we doing with it. It's, it continues to be critical to build relationships with students. You know, they inform us before something happens. Oftentimes, they try to mitigate, you know, peer-to-peer concerns. They really do. I give them credit. But we, you know, they need a lot more strategies and coaching up and how to navigate, you know, the peer conflicts. Mr. King has been critical in the work that he's done. You saw the numbers where the where the deans can really kind of pull up, you know, pull back, kick it to Mr. King, who's Johnny on the spot. And, you know, his background in social work as a former dean really connects well. He has the patience, the the personality to make those other connections with students and their families to hold students to a higher level of, you know, expectations in the building.
Thanks very much. Oh, you wanted, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And I just wanted to add as well that we also have instances of unauthorized presence because students feel somewhat disconnected from class. Maybe they were out for a while because they were sick and they were finding it difficult to catch up. Maybe I've had a student, I've had several students tell me that class is too hard. And so just trying to acclimate themselves to high school so they find class avoidance a little bit easier. And so what we've done in those particular cases, we refer those students to SST. We refer those students to social workers if it's a social emotional need. So there's, there are just, it it's a multitude of various reasons as to why students are in the hallways and not in class. So it's not just fighting. It's not just drugs. We just have students that are really struggling academically and the only what, the only, the only way out for them is to avoid class. And so as deans, we sit with our students, we talk with our students, we try to figure everything out. We want to see them holistically so that we can try and figure out and partner with their parents, their teachers, their grade-level team as to how we can best support them.
That's great. Thank you.
And I'll just add that, remember, we're looking a year behind. And authorized presence can also be as simple as you were in a hall without a pass and somebody wrote a note to the dean about it. It can be just that simple. And I think I sent a note to the board a couple of weeks ago that now kids aren't on their phones in class to be able to text each other to be in meeting the hall. And the November twenty-three to November twenty-four data showed a twenty-nine percent decrease in unauthorized presence for that same time period. So hopefully, when you see the quarterly update next month, then you will see some improvement in in where we are. Because we're, the challenge with these historical reports, we're still last year, but in our operational sense, we've kind of moved on and we've seen some improvement. And bell to bell, no sell, I shouldn't say it, that's not what it is, but you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That kind of systemic change, I believe, has had a, a, has had a ripple effect with other data points that we've been looking at. So just stay tuned for that next month when you take a look at that.
Good. Very good. Okay, we'll do, just you three.
Thank you for the report. There's a lot in here and I'm sure my colleagues will have plenty of other things to say. So I'm just going to hone on, hint on one little thing. And that is something that jumped out at me this time that somehow has never struck me before. And that's the behavior incidents by graduation year. And then also, in a similar vein, suspensions by gradu, you know, when you break it out by graduation year. And I was really struck by this line and you you remarked on it when you put the slides up, between our upperclassmen and class people and lower class, that that doesn't sound right. Underclass, you know what I mean.
Ninth and tenth grade.
Freshman, sophomore versus junior, senior, right? And it seems like, I mean, it's a, it's a huge difference. It's really huge. And, you know, I know juniors and seniors probably thinking, well, I can't And, you know, I know juniors and seniors probably thinking, well, I can't get into college or get a job if I've got, you know, twenty discipline referrals or whatever. You know, I mean, I'm sure there's a little bit of that motivation. You're getting closer to the exit and the real world and all of that. Um, but it seems to me there's this real opportunity with our freshmen and sophomore to get after this problem. And it seems to me there's two, two-way, I mean, just sitting from a parent and school board seat, not from an expert seat, there's sort of two ways in there. One way is, why are these kids arriving here thinking that they can do this stuff? So then that suggests to me, we need to have some more, um, conversation with District sixty-five about, wh- what are you guys doing around behavioral expectations with your kids before you send them over to the high school? So that's, that's on the receiving end. And then once they're here, it also seems to me that we have an opportunity for our really, I think, quite well-behaved juniors and seniors uh, to somehow influence or mentor these freshmen and sophomores. And I don't, I don't know exactly what we do there and it's not really my job to suggest to you how to run some sort of mentoring program. It's for you guys. It's just an observation that this seems to me a real opportunity. Rather than just waiting around for everybody to become a junior when all of a sudden, for reasons that we don't even understand, behavior gets better. Let's just try and, you know, get on it earlier in, in some fashion. It's not just punitive, it's not just piling on, uh, more suspensions. But, you know, the, the, those were the things that spring to mind. Do, do you have any thoughts off the top of your head?
Yeah, I do.
'Cause that was very.
I appreciate, uh, the question. And, you know, I'm going back to one of those earlier slides. Uh, seven hundred and fifty-one unique students with one referral, three hundred and forty-one. One referral. So that means to me like the kids who received them, okay.
They learn, they're like, okay.
Got it.
Not gonna do that again.
And that was forty-five percent of those who actually received, um, and in, uh, an incident.
I do love tho- those kind of numbers.
So that's great.
That is good.
Yeah, that's, that's a, a good indicator, those one and dones. Um, so, yeah, great point.
Yeah, the other overarching opportunity, obviously, and it sounds like you've jumped on it, are those, the, the repeat offenders.
Right.
Who just cannot.
Yeah, small percent, but they just can't get right.
Stop it.
Yeah.
Just stop it already.
Uh, I, I will add to that, just a couple of months ago, uh, we, you know, uh, leadership at District sixty-five, they've reached out to say, hey, what, you know, what, what are you doing? Um, asking questions about, you know, not only our, our restorative work, our, our truancy practices, our disciplinary practices. So we've had, uh, two meetings, um, so far, just, you know, leadership to leadership. So, uh, there's a start.
Yeah.
There's a start.
Nice.
Thank you.
Very encouraging. Mira?
Well, and I would say a continuation. I mean, you, you do amazing work with our freshmen and our sophomores and it takes time, you know? So we have the fash and sash, right? Am I saying that right? Um, so there are a lot of things that are being done to, for freshmen and sophomores directly for that very reason. I guess my question was around, um, I'm wondering if you all have the opportunity to coach our staff because you mentioned how so many kids report that it may be maladaptive, but that's why they're out in the hallways, that's why they're doing things is 'cause what's happening in the classroom in that tier-one space is insufficient. And, and I love all you teachers, anybody who's watching, um, I respect you. And we're a part of the problem. And so I'm just curious if you have the opportunity to coach staff in that way to help them improve their strategies? 'Cause I was trying to look at where a lot of these are occurring and it seems like it's in that space.
No, I hate to put Dr. Davis, you know, despite with our E E A, uh, program, but I, I'm sure there's.
Doctor Robinson, thank you. Uh, there is absolutely room. Uh, I, I recommend that you, uh, consult with, uh, Doctor Brown to, to, to get in there and to assist folks.
Right.
In that.
So we just catch that plan?
I see what you did there.
That's right there. Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, there it is.
That's yes and. These folks, I think, do a lot of consultation all the time with teachers about re-entry, about an opportunity for a redo in a restorative manner as well. And I think Mr. King was gonna add something.
I'm gonna have, ask Mr. King if you could step up here to discuss this.
Well, I thank you, Mrs. Oriano. I mean, I was literally leaning over, I thought I was gonna hit my head or something. I'm waiting to get in the game, somebody called me off the bench. No one here has ever coached a sport, come on. So, um, so a, a lot of it, I, I think, um, there's just multiple opportunities, I think. I, I know, uh, E A was mentioned, but, um, there's some great restorative practices training going on if I, if I, uh, you know, can say so myself. Um, there, there are, um, o- other opportunities, um, where we learn things about students, the Student Forum, um, the, the Emerge, uh, group had a, a nice retreat. And, and if you all noticed, uh, um, with the Student Forum this year, uh, there was no talk about suspensions and detentions and things of that nature. And that, that's, you know, something to really think about, how, uh, uh, that, that, uh, that, that long-lasting trend, uh, was over, at least, uh, this year it was. Just working with, with teachers, uh, teachers are often, uh, having questions about students and, you know, what makes them tick and why they're not in class and things of that nature. And personally, I just think we should, um, do more asking the students what their stories are. I mean, it, it's easy for us to say, well, the kids, you know, aren't interested in this or they have deficiencies here and there. We really just gotta get their stories. And to, to, to answer a question about, um, upperclassmen kind of helping out the, um, the, uh, freshman sophomore, when we do Student Empowerment Program, uh, sometimes those are, uh, mixed grades. I, I get the majority of the referrals from the sophomore, um, and, and freshman, uh, groups. But, uh, when I have the opportunity to have some of the older students in, there is a peer conference type of ending where after we've done communication and after we've done decision-making and after we've talked about real-life experiences, uh, the students talk about why, um, you know, what, what landed them in the Student Empowerment Program. And the upper, uh, you know, the, the seniors and juniors, they do a really good job, um, um, I don't wanna say correcting, uh, the, the younger students, but do it, they do a really good job of being the leader in terms of, uh, asking them questions about their actions and suggesting things that they could have done differently. I don't know if I've answered a, a few of those things, but, um, and then, um, with accountability projects, um, these are tailored research projects that I'm having students do. There, there's a food for thought, um, you know, there, there's, there's something on communication, decision-making. But they actually have to talk about, uh, the impact of their actions. Who it impacted, how it impacted them. Uh, they have to, um, research, um, ways to communicate, um, uh, you know, ways to deal with anger, things of that nature. Um, they have to identify three, uh, adults in the building who they can trust and, and talk to. They have to come up with a plan of action in terms of, um, how do I right, uh, the wrong that I've done? The parents get a copy of the, the project as well, um, and then I give the students feedback. And, um, you know, it's all about accountability. And it's accountability, uh, the power of reflection, uh, and to be able to do so without shame, um, is, is the most important aspect. And I think just doing more of that, uh, to a higher degree, um, i- is just the best thing ever.
And I would like to add, um, that in regards to unauthorized presence, which is what we're currently talking about, what we do as deans when we speak with students is that we provide them with strategies. It's our, our, um, um, class avoidance unauthorized presence students. We provide them with strategies. Um, we work with the teachers and the department chairs when we have a, a particular need for a student so that everybody's in the loop. And I, you know, we'll send out emails to the teachers to ask about what types of behaviors they're seeing from these student, this, these particular students. Or how often are these students in class? What does their attendance look like? So that we can kind of pinpoint when these students are avoiding class. Um, we've also, uh, performed walkthroughs in classrooms so that the students see us and they know that we are concerned about, you know, where they are and what they're doing throughout the course of the school day. And so I think those things combined have actually helped combat some of the unauthorized presence that we've seen in the past. Is it a work in progress? Absolutely. Is there one singular, um, solution? Absolutely not, because our students are so unique. And so it's about, you know, looking at each, each case individually and looking for the similarities and the differences so that we're able to come up with something that works for students and individualize the support that they need.
Um, just real quickly and, and something else that has helped us, uh, a great deal this year, um, over the summer, all the deans, we sent out for our returning students, we sent emails to all the parents regarding the number of tardies that they have so that the parents were aware of, this is how many tardies your student has, lest these are the things you can do to try to reduce your tardies and clear them coming into the school year. Some of the parents, of course, were very shocked with the sheer number of tardies that their students had because they just hadn't checked. Of course, you're checking your students' grades, but this was a, you know, allowed them an opportunity to, you know, have that conversation with their students. And the students have been doing a really, really good job of going to the very, to AM Support, um, uh, the Homework Center and all the other, uh, supports to try to clear their tardies. One thing that I saw this summer, um, from summer school, uh, it was a great opportunity also, um, for the fre- incoming freshmen and really going over their expectations, getting to class on time and things of that nature. That's carried over for a lot of these freshmen. I don't have the data right now in front of me, I can feel the difference in the building. Um, Doctor Kenzie came to the dean's office and she fussed at us and told us we need to get students into class. Five minutes left before the bell rings, safety is encouraging, hey, let's start moving, let's start getting to class. The students are now not waiting the bell rings, now I'm gonna go to class. That was a big problem last year and it was, it's definitely reflected in the data. So if the bell rings, okay, now I'm gonna go to class, well, I'm sorry, I have to go to the washroom first, then I go to class. That was why we had so many students that were, you know, really, really late for class and all these unauthorized presence, because now as the safety officers go and check and make sure everybody, hey, let's get to class, you're finding tons of students. I, the data's gonna reflect the difference next year. Have, having the, the mo- the conversation, hey, come on, let's start getting to class five minutes prior to, it's making a huge difference. I think you all will see that, um, next year in, in the data and super excited. We just see, there's a feeling in the building that's different from last year. And it's, it's a refreshing group of, of teenagers in the building who are here to learn. And so we're very excited about how things are going so far this year.
Great. Looking forward to that. Good.
Okay. Um, so I just wanna say before I ask my question that I think, you know, the forefront of all of our brains is that we have to keep looking at and recognizing and acknowledging, and we do, that we have the racial disproportionality that we do in exclusionary discipline. But, and I think we, we know that and you guys are, we're all, this whole school community is working on that. Um, and especially, um, you all. But one thing that jumped out for me that was different in this report this year that I just hadn't really, you know, uh, noticed before as much is that there's such a huge percentage of suspensions for, um, low-income students. And even greater in a lot of categories than we see in terms of, um, the percentages when we look at our, uh, black and brown students. And I just wondered, um, do you have any comment on like, is there any research data that you're aware of, of just kind of in general, what people tend to think might be the root causes behind, um, the high rate of discipline incidents amongst, among low-income students? And how much of that can we impact in the school? You know, how much can we compa- combat those factors or better support low-income students?
I was gonna say, that's a, that's a good question. You know, in some of the work, uh, with our partnership with Northwestern's researchers and, and some of the day, the data that they've presented to us, uh, we've heard, you know, uh, specific situations about students feeling, uh, kinda, um, called upon, embarrassed, you know, when they're, they are not prepared, uh, fearing being able to, um, present, you know, their work in front of the class. Regarding, you know, and that's just among other things. But, you know, specifically regarding students who are free, reduced, on status, you know, that's something that's, it is a, a curious question that I'm even interested in, in looking into deeper.
Thanks.
I think what you, what you said, Ms. Hinco, a little bit earlier about the individuality of all of these incidents, that's what makes it so challenging, is that there is no one answer, um, even to capture the needs of, um, even our low-income students. It's, they, every, they all have their own history and stories and reasons. So it's really challenging. Anybody else?
I don't have any questions, um, but I do wanna say that the presentation was awesome. Just the, the flow of the information, um, how you all presented it, um, was just very engaging. Of course, it's, it's data that is so hard to talk about, right? And it's never an easy topic, um, but it's really clear down to the glossary, I think. That you wanted to make sure that we understood the work that you're doing. And, and so I just wanna say that I, I recognize that and that, that came through in your presentation. So, thank you.
I appreciate it. And I appreciate my team being here, uh, to reflect. They, they know the stories. Uh, they're literally very proximate to the work, uh, and I'm glad that they had FaceTime, uh, with you and the community so people can see who's dealing with their kids.
Yeah.
And who's supporting their kids and who's loving and caring on their kids, uh, while they're here with us.
I think you should send, uh, Mr. King into the middle schools. So, so start with them, going back to, 'cause I was thinking the same thing Gretchen said. I was like, dang, how can I, how can we start sooner? You know?
I know.
Because it, what did we hear from the last presentation? The executive functioning, how that was, um, a top topic. And of course, our freshmen are coming into this big space trying to find their space, um, in, in this school. And again, it goes to us being a very diverse and dynamic community. You know, we, we don't have the benefit of everyone earning the same income in our community. And they all wind up here at E T H S. And so with them comes the challenges that come with not having access or opportunity. And, and that's what you see roll out in behaviors. And, um, and then you have to figure out how to help them make it to their senior year. So I, um, again, you know, this work is heavy and I, and I know, I mean, I sit on the committee, so, um, I, I hear how you all are working this through and dissecting everything, to try to figure out what the, the, the outcomes and the opportunities should be, so. Yeah, but that's it, you should just go to the middle schools and start with them.
I, I did have the opportunity to, um, to do a restorative practices exercise for the, um, reading and math and the social context classes, uh, during the summer as well as the access, E T H S access classes, as well as the, um, reading and science classes, so. And I was at Robert Crown, uh, recently, so, uh, maybe, uh, maybe that counts for something as well.
And, and Mr. K- Mr. King, will you tell the chair of the board and public how many folks you've trained internally under restorative practices?
Oh, boy. Um, you know, I, I'm on pace to do six trainings this year. How many? I could get back to you on that. It's, Ty, you know the numbers, right? How, how many? I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, uh,
Yeah, no.
I don't, I don't love to count the numbers, I just love to do the training.
Yeah, we, we know that you'll be well over a hundred for this year.
There we go, there we go.
Um, but that we're well over a third of the school that has been trained thus far, so, well done.
A third of the adults.
And that, that comes after.
Third of the adults, thank you.
And that, that comes after, um, uh, looking at the training and reducing it from, um, taking out all the redundancy and reducing it from a two-day to a one-day to give, uh, uh, more opportunity, more, more staff, more training. And so, uh, I'm, I'm. And so I'm very excited about that, and we'll continue to drive that in until everyone's trained.
Well, they, community too? Or is that, not yet?
Yeah, I'm for it.
Okay, because I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah, I'm ready. Whenever, whenever, whenever we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. I'm ready.
I mean, that's, and I say that, I'm not joking, though. That's how we provide wraparound support to our children, so that every place they enter in the community, they get the same thing.
The same language, the same process.
Got it.
It is encouraging that you are starting to have conversations with District 65. That's encouraging to me. And I know that there's so much work to do, right? It's not like we can stop our work here and go work with them. I mean, you've got, you're training all of, as many of the staff here as you can, and that's really important, and I would encourage you to do that. But it's just a process, and it's big.
They come with us with so many needs.
Yes.
And, you know, it's easier to point down.
Yes.
But they show up who they are.
Yes.
And it's our responsibility to kind of carry them.
And once they get here.
Yeah.
They do become our responsibility.
That's right.
And I appreciate that we take that very seriously. We take it, we take it on, we embrace them. They are our students.
I just, I wanted to add, when we were just talking about students who are economically disadvantaged, and I think if we were to disaggregate that by race and by IEP, we would probably see a lot of the same trends that are already in there. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight that. And I love what you said, too, Dr. Robinson, about looking at what are the conditions in the classroom that help kids to know that they belong. And so I would hate for us to ever look at, yeah, income and family financial disadvantage as some sort of a reason for what's occurring in our schools.
Definitely, definitely.
All right, well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And again, thank you again for your service, Gretchen, to this team, which would be... There we go, all right.
All right. Moving on with our agenda, we've got four FOIA's. Dr. Davis?
Yeah, my on, yes. We have FOIA's from Kimmel Plan and two from Hayden, and the responses are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item is board committee reports. Do we have any board committee reports? We've had a couple of. Been seeing stuff comes through, okay. All right. All right. And now with the superintendent's report, Dr. Campbell.
I wanna say that Rachel has had a review session for Calc, so she's not here tonight and had a bunch of work. So Rachel, like many students, are preparing for final exams, so...
Yeah. We encourage that.
So our families, our Wild Kids are wrapping up a successful 2024. Whether it's dancing the night away at the freshman-sophomore winter formal this past weekend, or performing in an absolutely beautiful jazz concert, studying and preparing for semester exams next week, our Wild Kids are continuing to shine both in the classroom and beyond. Just before a fall break, our students explore the legacy and the opportunities offered by historically black colleges and universities during their HBCU Experience Day. The event featured speakers, application reps, and inspiring panel of HBCU students and graduates who helped empower our Wild Kids as they make their plan for the future once they graduate from EHS. And I don't know if you heard Dr. LaVizal say tonight, but our HBU applications are up by 14%, which is huge. Our athletic department launched its new Wild Kid Student Athlete Speaker Series with the guest speaker Jamal Cole, the CEO and founder of My Block, My Hood, My City. Jamal's message of education, community engagement, and mentorship inspired our student athletes to lead with the purpose and make a difference both on and off the field. ETHS is hosting its annual Empty Bowl event this Wednesday to raise awareness about food insecurity and support organizations that fight hunger in the community. Thank you to our Community Service Club and leading the effort, and to our Arts and Innovation Department, Operations, Student Activities, and Nutrition Services for their collaboration. Thanks to our Human Resources Department for sponsoring the cause for staff to receive free soup for lunch. And the Community Service Club is wrapping up its gift drive this Friday with all of donations from students and staff supporting local non-for-profit organizations and migrant shelters. And finally, I want to say to all of the Wild Kids, best of luck next week with semester exams and experiences, and I hope everyone would have a restful and restorative winter break. ETHS winter break begins December 21st, 20th? Is it the 20th or the 21st? Is it the 20th or the 21st?
The 20th.
The 20th, yes. The 20th, Friday at, maybe even before 4:00, but yes. Good luck with finals.
Right, you get to say.
Happy holidays, and we'll see everyone in the new year.
Wow. It's amazing. Here we are. Okay, thank you. All right. So we are at Items for Action. The first item is the adoption of the 2024 tax levy. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Nancy?
Yes.
Ludenstone?
Yes.
Roncel?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Incar?
Yes.
Rollaway?
Yes.
That is one.
Yes, thank you. The next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of ETHS Arts and Innovation Wing expansion, both the exterior window replacement, approval of commercial athletic sponsorships, CNW Market and Ice Cream Parlor, approval of commercial athletic sponsorships, Oakton College, approval of minutes from November 12th, 2024, regular and closed session meetings, treasurer's report from September 2024, approval of bills, and personnel report.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Ludenstone?
Yes.
Roncel?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Rollaway?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Taylor, roll in.
Yes. Okay, the next item is old and new business. Does anybody have old or new business to present? Okay, any polling of the board? I just wanna say happy holidays to all of you. And like Dr. Campbell said, good luck to all the students in finals. I've already heard a few students talking about finals. There's a little anxiety out there. There's a little bit, yeah. Yeah. All right, this, oh, can we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, so we are adjourned at, oh, 9:54. Awesome.